So not only is it going to be a sportsplex where my kids can benefit from it, by the time that's built, my kids are going to be done with their sports. So that's okay. But what I'm hoping for, more restaurants, better shopping places, I'm sorry, but more nicer shopping places. And going to all these different sportsplexes around Illinois, I know the amount of money I spend and all the other moms spend while we're there, and the time it takes us to get there, and the crowded they are, and how to find a parking because it's so busy. I just want not just that with my kids, because like I said, they're going to be done by the time this is decided on. But I want it for our town. I want to be happy when I say I live in Lamont, and downtown has this and this. I'm not happy to say some of the stores that it has, or the Aldi's that we have, or the Goodwill. I want some nicer stuff down here. That's what I thought I bought when I bought my house in Lamont. But unfortunately, that didn't happen. So you have my vote.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Redzky. I've lived in Lamont for 19 years, and I also happen to be a business owner in Lamont. I opened a business recently, probably about two months ago, after owning a business in Chicago for multiple years. We decided to move out to Lamont because I love this community. I love this area. My kids go to school here, and my kids have played travel sports since seven years old. So my son is now 16, and I cannot tell you how much money we have put into my kids playing sports. And it's not because I think that he's going to get a college scholarship or anything else. It wasn't for that reason. It was for the camaraderie for the parents. All the parents hang out. I'm great friends with a lot of them. It was excellent for, it's great for kids to be busy, to do other things, and to stay active. So that's a big part of it. This Sunday, I went to the MACS. I really regret right now that I did not take pictures. Because when we pulled in, my daughter had a 9:15 game, and this is my daughter. We've, like I said, we've been playing travel sports for multiple years. So we pull up there, and there's nowhere to park in the entire lot. So we have to go across the way. There's a whole nother lot across the way. It is now quarter to nine in the morning, and there's nowhere to park in that lot. So I told my husband, "I'll drop you off because I'm not walking, and you go find someplace to park." It's ridiculous. And you get in there, and there's parents with their chairs waiting for the volleyball courts, with their chairs standing outside in another line because they enter different than the soccer people do. They're standing with their chairs outside waiting to get in until it's their kids' turn to play because there isn't even enough room to sit down inside. You go in there for the parents. The concession lines are super long. We stayed there for a soccer game. The concession, there's 40, 50 people in line for concessions that early in the morning. This is a huge, huge opportunity. And for people who don't understand that and don't see it, it's because you're not physically in it, and you haven't taken the time to go check it out yourselves. Westmont Yard, if you go there, we were also there on Sunday afternoon. You go to Westmont Yard, packed. No place to park. There's a little stupid burger joint next door, which obviously doesn't have good food. However, they are packed as well because people need someplace to eat when they go to these facilities, and you're spending your entire day doing these things. If you have the time to be able to go out and go shopping and stuff, that's fantastic. If you can leave, a lot of times you can't. If you have a short time in between games. But if you have two hours, absolutely. When we go to tournaments, and we've traveled between Illinois, Wisconsin, Tennessee, Indiana, I can't even say how many states we've been to for travel sports. Everywhere that you go, if you have two hours downtime between a soccer game, you're out there, you're going someplace to eat. Where's the closest place? Actually, I make maps for everybody on the team before I leave so that they all know, these are the places to eat. These are the places you can get whatever. My son's team, just one, and I'm done. My son actually just stopped playing soccer this year. But the boys' team, the Sixteens, have to practice 45 minutes away up north, which was one of the reasons we decided, you know what, you're done. Because I don't have time two days a week. I own a business. I don't close till 7:30. I don't have the ability to get you out there 45 minutes away. That's how far people need to travel to have their kids do these things. And again, if you haven't seen it, please take some time. Any Saturday, any Sunday, drive out to the MACS. It's a 15-minute, 20-minute ride. Go out there and look at it for yourselves.
You know, you didn't give yourself a charitable plug for your new jewelry store. She put, the family put their jewelry store in by 11th Street. We had some issues with what we got her in before the holiday season. And when we did the donation drawing, you donated through a raffle drawing to get people in your store, was it $4,000?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand, $8,000 worth of free jewelry. And I pulled the names, actually, armed, because I was taking pictures. I still haven't got a phone call from Doris yet. Tony still owes me a thank you for pulling the main prize out. But that, we'll work on it. But thank you for being in town and bringing your business to town, sir.
Yeah, my name is Del Schroeder, and I live in Lamont since 1979. I must say, I'm pretty gratified to see there's so many people here with such a vast amount of disposable income that they can spend thousands of dollars chasing their kids around the countryside and playing sports. My only question about that is, how many of you are there in Lamont? All of you, fine. You know how many people are in Lamont? 16,000. So they should have no voice in this affair.
Hold on, it's not a, it's...
They should have no voice in this affair because six of you decided with no input from the majority of taxpayers, not those who run about the country, like yourself, after you 10 minutes speech about how you personally think this is a good idea. Fine for you. I had three grandchildren, two children in Lamont. We didn't spend thousands of dollars running around the countryside. Yet we enjoyed living in Lamont. So, you know, another thing. One of the issue about these, all these people, all these parking problems you have, and all the stores at Proster. As the one trustee over there mentioned to me one meeting ago, Lamont is in a donut hole. And as I pointed out to him, we're a cul-de-sac in a donut hole. How many of those teeming sports centers did you see that are so landlocked and so isolated? You've got, you have to have adequate transportation to get to these people, to these sites. We are at the end of a two-lane road in a dead-end town with no through traffic. If you think this location is ideal, then you better go back to business, girl. And my, the original problem is, six people decided what the majority of Lamonters should endure. It was not the democratic process. And that, no matter how many issues you've been talking about, how this is a good idea, we still have not had a voice in this affair. And I think we should.
Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Angie Gatto. I live at 427 Jane Court, Lamont. I've been a resident for 21 years this March. I have two children and two daughters. Together, I have 16 years of traveling around with soccer, mainly Lamont Raiders, the travel soccer club that's here. I have volunteered my time for the last eight years for the club, and have seen hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of Lamont children participate in that program. Last week, I had the pleasure of the opportunity to get a tour of the new Romeoville facility that the sportsplex that I understand was supposed to be built here, as of this time should have been done. It was absolutely gorgeous. It was filled with children practicing. It's in a beautiful strip mall. It was a gorgeous building. I almost didn't believe it when I drove up to it that that was the place. I also spent a lot of time in McCook. McCook has recently been expanded to include now volleyball courts. They also have children's birthday parties there in addition to indoor sports. So anyway, lots and lots of traffic, lots and lots of opportunity. Sadly, over the years that I've lived in Lamont, I've seen countless restaurants and businesses fail, mainly in general to the lack of traffic driven from outside our community, or actually maybe even our own community not supporting our internal restaurants. I don't want to see that continue. I want Lamont to flourish. In general, I'm definitely in support of the complex in Lamont. I wanted to bring traffic, drive traffic, and bring additional revenue to our town. Actually, also just the tax credits, or the tax revenue that it will generate is why we all should be in support of that. So thank you. I appreciate the efforts, and I hope it goes through.
Hello, and thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. My name is Mike Gardner. I live at 16553 Pastor Drive in Lamont, Illinois. I'm speaking on behalf of several organizations that would be able to use this facility. And when I say several, I'm talking about a soccer club that has over 400 participants. I'm also talking about another soccer club, Windy City Pride, as well as Chicago Inter, that has a total, when you combine the three soccer clubs, of over 1,000 kids that could fill this facility from 5 until 9 o'clock every single day during the winter. We also have looked into starting our own league, which what the MACS that we all travel to has, that would generate a tremendous amount of revenue. And that facility would be filled from Saturday morning at 6:45 until 9:45 at night. Okay? We have the resources to bring these teams in. In regards to other organizations, I also am involved with a travel softball organization that spends $39,000 a year in softball. And that takes that back. Last year, we spent $156,000 in travel soccer as an organization. And that's not including the two other clubs that I just mentioned. There's the possibility, just here in Lamont and the surrounding teams that we all work with. That's why all of us are here today. It's because we've reached out and we've tried to do this. You know how frustrating it is for us to go to this beautiful place in Romeoville when it could be right here? And I'll bring the teams here. We have the resources to bring the people here. We're wasting our time and our money by going to other facilities. The revenue that we could bring to downtown Lamont is significant. And it's something that people have to look at. I'm a taxpayer. My kids are getting older. I know that I only have three or four more years left of them playing travel sports. But I want my kids' kids to have the chance to play here. And I hope they live in Lamont. But regardless of whether or not the facility is here, or if it's in Romeoville or someplace else, people are going to continue to go to these places. And Dorothy made a good comment. If anyone has a question on whether or not these can be successful, please take two minutes to go to these locations on a weekend or during the week and see how busy they are. And I think it'll probably take some of the negative energy that you have about what this could do to our community. Because I really do think it's important, and I would love nothing more, to have my kids and our surrounding teams come to our facilities. We do a great job of maintaining our fields. And when people leave Lamont, they always say two things. Your fields are fantastic. We wish we had more. Thank you.
Can I first say, I'm sorry, your son's not playing this weekend.
Yeah. Well, that was a nice break. My name is Michelle Nagelfleaner. I live at 17 East Custer Street, up in Lamont. I'm against the facility being built, thinking that it won't succeed. If I have more of a guarantee, it would succeed. I would be for it. I was a single mom, I still am a single mom. I brought up my two children, basically by myself, and they both did triathlon. So I do know what it's like to do that. And I still disagree with that. So been there, done that, the whole thing. I want to make sure there's more homework done on this. Not just, oh, the Hornets will come. I mean, that's great. That's one thing. So what other towns are being looked at? What other towns are marketed? What other towns? I want just Lamont to support this. It's not going to be enough. I mean, this is, by the time I think it's finished, it's going to be like $30 million. So as a businessperson and a taxpayer, I want to make sure that this is going to succeed and not just, hey, this is a great idea. I mean, like I said, I had spoken last time, you know, the condos. Somebody thought that was a great idea, and it took forever to sell. When they built that, in my opinion, they built them too high. You come over the bridge, it tracks from the beauty of the city. So it doesn't seem like people come up with these ideas, and then they don't think them through. So I just want to make sure. I'm against it because I feel there's not enough homework. You know, I like the idea that people have come and said, okay, there's, you know, these facilities that are jam-packed. But I have to make sure, you know, for me, when I would like to make a vote on this, right, hopefully, a vote on this, that there's all the homework done. And show me, prove to me, this facility makes money, this facility makes money. These other towns are going to come here and support this town. If there's one in Romeoville, is everybody going to go there? And then there's not enough to support Lamont. So that's wrong. Oh, and one other thing. I want to make sure, you said about the new brewery. To make it easy for them, you know, like I told you before, I went in, boom. One thing, I was done. So it seems here, you know, you have to go through 10 steps to get a business. If it's just one, and the rumor gets around, hey, it's easy to get a business in this town, that's going to be, you know, what's going to happen. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else as far as on the sports complex?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gianna Hughes, and I'm a taxpayer who lives in Lamont. And I appreciate all the comments, but I think one thing we are doing wrong is that we're putting the cart before the horse. This is not land that is owned by Lamont. This is land that is owned by the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. So therefore, since this land is owned by the MWRD, it will therefore be leased to the Village of Lamont. Second of all, another thing that I want to point out that some of you may not be aware of, the site is, or has been deemed, a brown field. And I'm not talking about the Cleveland Browns football field. This is a brown field. A brown field is land that was previously used for industrial purposes. And in our case, in Lamont, it was the Marine Chemical Terminal. That land is toxic, it's polluted, and it's contaminated. And before we can build on it, we need to have it cleaned up. Now, the board has not provided us any price tag on how much this will cost. So I think before we talk about building the sports complex, we should first get the land cleaned up and find out if we can even build on it in the first place. It makes no sense to be going ahead with this project without finding out if that land will be safe for our children to play on. And second of all, I would also like to point out that one of my questions was answered on the website. And my question to the village last week, or a couple weeks, a couple meetings ago, was, what did the village do with the petitions that were filed? The answer that was given is this. The petitions that were submitted to the village clerk are filed and stored in Village Hall. I would like to say that that answer is not good enough. Because when this project was unveiled last January, we were informed that we had 30 days to gather signatures. So we, the residents, taxpayers of Lamont, would have a chance to vote on this issue. So there were a number of us that circulated petitions, and we got signatures in order to have our residents vote on this sports complex. So we submitted our petitions on February 27. Here they are. And we actually submitted more than double the amount that was required. So you're saying that you took these petitions and you filed them in a drawer and stored them in Village Hall. we have found a letter that was written on September 16, 2013, just a few short months ago, that is written to Mr. George Schaefer, our village administrator. And it's written by CDS Energy. And this is one of the companies that the village board has consulted with regarding the building of the sports complex. And it states, "Dear Mr. Schaefer, as you know, CDS Energy has been working on behalf of the village to secure financing for the sports complex proposed in Lamont. We have come to the conclusion that the project is best served with funding from a municipal bonding via referendum with support of the residents of the Village of Lamont." Now, my question for all of you, do you think it is right to bypass the voters of Lamont and pursue this project anyways without the support of its residents?
I already voted for them. That's why I'm going to deal with it.
Mr. Brandon, Mr. Brandon's on the record. Play back and forth.
I think we all need to remember, we're in this together. This is the Village of Lamont. This is Village of Fay. We don't want to be divided. We all want what's best for our community. We all want what's best for our children. Fundamentally, that is at the heart of everybody. I want to believe that. But there is something we need to do. We need to do our homework before $21 million. And that's just the estimate. It probably will cost more than $21 million. Because those taxes will be on in our lap, and we will be required to pay for them. Some of us here cannot afford it. And if people can't afford to live in a community, I don't care if it has the best sports facility in town. If people can't afford to live here, it's not going to be, it's not going to be good. So I really urge the board to carefully consider your next steps regarding the sports complex. And take the advice given to you by the experts that you have hired and repeal your repeal ordinance and go back to giving us, the voters of Lamont, a chance to have a say on this project. Thank you.
My name is Peter Borzeki. I live at 49 Lonko Drive. I moved 10 years ago to Lamont. I got two kids. One is 11, one is 10. I just drove from Chicago, from 35th Street and Western. That's where my son has practiced with. Because I don't have, we don't have a facility anywhere. My son plays for Raiders. I just drove, got him out of the practice early so I can come here and voice my voice. Wherever we go, tournaments or anything, soccer is a big sport here. There's a ton of kids playing soccer in the United States now. It's getting bigger and bigger. The fields are sporadic. There's not enough, you know, not even for the Raiders, enough fields in Lamont for us to play. We could come and make two, three tournaments easy every single year. Bring in a ton of traffic in here. This sport complex is going to work. I drove, you know, to MACS. There's a ton of, ton of people that play professional sports, travel sports in the United States. There's a lot of money in there. So I just, I'm for it. So that's my voice. Thank you.
Jim Lattis, 90 Timberline Drive. I think everybody knows here that I've been an advocate for the referendum process. And I felt the need to talk again this evening. First of all, I think sometimes you on the board, Mr. Mayor, you don't think we appreciate all your hard efforts. And believe me, I think you have done a great job in terms of dealing with the storms that we've had. My hat's off to the board and to our municipal employers. My hat's also off to all the parents and members of the sporting community here who participate in soccer and volleyball and make sure your kids are active in all those things. I want to say that I've always supported every park district referendum that this town has had. And I'd do it again tomorrow. But again, perhaps, I think in my mind, something like this is in the realm of the park district. I don't want, you know, we can argue every single point about the land it's being built on, about the purpose of the facility. But I know the village has never run any business, much less a large rental sports complex. So I think we need to be wary of that. And frankly, I know that this is, the costs that have been described are $21 million. We know with the interest, it'll be approaching $40 million over the life of the loan, whatever kind of loan we work out. And that's not clear. Only two weeks ago, the mayor described this as a concept. And there's so much that is unclear and unsure about this. We need a lot more answers and a lot more concrete information before we move ahead, folks. This is your, in the end, your tax money is going to guarantee this if it fails. And beyond the money for the principal and the interest on the loan, I understand, according to the study that was done, the operating expenses for a year are close to $1,500,000 for everything from security and insurance to cleaning costs. So this is not a cheap proposition. And I know you believe in your hearts it will work. And I hope if it happens, it better work. But if it doesn't, we're all going to be on the hook for this. And I believe when you're on the hook for that much money, you ought to have a direct vote on it. Thank you.
Just last, I want, you know, I want to comment on something you just said there. When you say that we have no experience as far as running businesses like that, the people that sit on this board run million-dollar companies. I, you know, I'm proud to say I started a business, and I have a business that brings in between $12 million to $15 million a year. I've managed a $20 million, I've watched a $20 million, excuse me, I've watched the village grow from roughly $15 million to $20 million over my last 11 years. Because of the reputation that I've put together and the hard work I've put together, I now am one of 11 board members that runs a billion-dollar train organization a year. The hardworking people on this board, Mr. Snagowski, Executive Vice President of K5, $100 million a year company. Ms. Virgilio has had her own company, is now tied to another environmental company. Mr. Miklos, Mr. Choldekas. Ms. Blatter is one of the, you know, is close to being on her way to being a dean at Marine Valley. She has thousands of people that she deals with on a yearly basis. I would go to war with these six people and the experience that these people have in business and in life when it comes to what they can do and their opinion. So I have to say that I do take somewhat, a little bit, I appreciate your comment, how well our staff has done. But when it comes to what we do as individuals and with what experience we have, I have to say I disagree with you, sir.
I was talking about the village.
Right, right. I know that you're not a volunteer, but I second that, okay? Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in regards to that, into the sports complex right now? Anybody else want to speak in regards to that, into the sports complex right now?
My name's Kevin Cliff. I live at three West Wind, Lamont, Illinois. I didn't plan on speaking again tonight, but I would just like to say that my experience, I played volleyball at the highest level and then now my kids are playing. So I've been through all the sports, like I've been up to the Elton Facility. I wish we would have had a facility right here too. So I'm all for a facility here in Lamont, I think it'd be great. I'm tired of getting up at five forty-five and traveling too. I agree with that a hundred percent. I guess the philosophical difference I have is, I don't believe the village should build it. I think a private enterprise should build it. And so, I guess that's where we differ. The, and so, I mean, I could get into some of the points like, you know, people going out for lunch when they're at these events. But I'm a little more curious, I guess, than the average family. We would always pack our lunches and we would eat in the car or whatever. So, I don't know what the, I never did a poll of people to see who's actually out spending money or who's buying the concession stands or what. Anyway, that's just my experience. I, I guess I could talk about the merits of the project. And, you know, they talked about the brown field. I've read where there's a one-year termination clause by the MWRD where if they deem the land essential, they can take it back with a one-year announcement. They cite examples like Lake Catherine and a few other places where they had these arrangements. But that doesn't preclude them from seizing the land back if they deem it essential. So, I would have a little concern about spending twenty-one million dollars before I would put it on some property that not necessarily could be kept mine for the future. In the FOIA's that I read, there were cases where people were not necessarily happy with the numbers and they, they wouldn't work unless they had more touches, as I heard it was called tonight. I, I was kind of curious why Argenta backed out of the financing agreement. There was no clarification on why they didn't want to be in the project. And then Nazero appeared, I don't know where that came from. And, so I guess, I would love to see the project here. Like I said, I'm all for it, I just think government shouldn't be in the...